Good evening, everyone. I am Yamika Robinson, Mayor of Lake City, South Carolina, and I am calling this special call city council meeting on Wednesday, August 2025. Calling this meeting to order. It is 5:30 PM. We will have our invocation tonight led by Councilwoman Scott and our pledge of allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem Cooper. Can we all please stand?
Let's repeat the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who is in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from all evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, the glory forever.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilwoman Scott. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Cooper. Madam Clerk, excuse me, can you please poll the city council members?
Mayor Yamika Robinson?
Present.
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 Councilmember Willie Scott.
Present.
Councilmember Sandra Libby Crosby.
Present.
Councilmember Nicole Sematary.
Councilmember Jason Brown.
Present.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been properly moved to second. Any questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Any opposed? Thank you. Now I need a motion to approve the minutes. Action to approve minutes from the regular council meeting held on August 12, 2025.
Second.
Was that a complete second? Okay. It has been properly moved in second. Any questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Any opposed? Thank you. Now we'll move towards to our legislation portion. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a resolution.
Requesting the city of Lake City to contract with Shane Kirkley, CPA, a partner in Shaheen Hancock &amp; Godwin LLP in all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve Resolution 2025.031 for final reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been properly moved in second. Any questions, council, or concern?
What is the pay for?
I'm sorry.
The pay?
The pay.
What is the salary?
Just to use him for a year or anything like that. This is a temporary contract.
Okay, I was just wondering how long would it last? It could be a four-year. How much would, you know, would our budget be so short? Is it limited to how many hours or how many weeks with this?
It was 15 hours, no more than 15 hours a month.
No more than 15 hours.
A month.
Monthly, that's right.
Okay.
So what typically do? What we typically do is either Ms. Brenner or I just give him a call and say, "We need your assistance with this." He'll come down, we work through it, and then we let it go.
So he's like on call?
Right.
So he's no more than 15 hours a month?
Yes, ma'am.
Which would be $24.75 per month, no more than that?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, and that is that him working on site or working off-site?
It could be either way. We didn't really spell it out. He's been great in coming down, but I don't think that's absolutely necessary if he has the books and the ability to go through our stuff.
So he has the materials actually at?
He doesn't.
Off-site to actually access?
Not unless we send it to him.
Okay. Via email or something like that?
Yeah, right.
Okay. So he will be assisting the finance department on-site or off-site?
Yes, ma'am.
With a total of no more than 15 hours per month?
That's correct.
But here we do have any hours in excess will be billed. So do we expect for him to? Because?
No, really, I don't really expect to. I don't really expect to use him that much. He's done an awful lot of work already. And so what I would expect at this point is if we've got any questions or something else that needs to be addressed, we can call him and he'll come down. We asked him to come down today, for example, to meet with the mayor. And so, no, he's been very flexible.
Okay. If he comes down or when he comes down, any expenses, travel expenses or lodging or meals or anything, is that going to be covered by the city as well?
We haven't really discussed it. He's only in Camden, so he just comes down and goes on about his life.
Okay. So we don't expect to have that in there?
No.
The contract.
Okay.
We can only abide by what's in the contract.
Yes.
But at any point in time, if this contract needs to be amended?
City council would do that.
We don't have to have the flexibility to amend it to accommodate whatever needs we have?
Yes, ma'am.
To council, kind of going back off a question that Ms. Scott just asked about the term length. I see a term of engagement. It says engagement will commence on August 1st, but of course, this letter was typed on July 28th. But here we are on August 20th. And I assume after tonight, if this is passed, it will commence on August 21st, starting then?
We've been using him now since probably July. And I took that on myself to engage him for that purpose until we could gauge the extent of the problems and he could prepare a contract. We've been using him, I assume we've paid him, right? We haven't really looked into that, but.
What's that now?
I said whether we've actually paid him, I don't know because Brandon would have handled that.
Yeah, I haven't seen any invoices myself in talking with him today.
So pretty much, you know, everybody's time is valuable. So you just made sure that he wasn't working for free?
Yes, sir.
The time that you had him here?
You're right, I'll do that.
So we do want to go, we do want to do back pay?
If he been here working, because that'll be.
Yeah, that's only right, that's legally. Yeah.
Well, I mean, I can, I wouldn't want anybody to come in and just work for free. But, but, but with having, we should have had a contract in the beginning or either actually consulting the governing body about bringing someone in, especially at a rate like this, which is, I mean, which is fine because of his expertise, he has to get paid. But, you know, moving forward from now, any type of contracted person, we need, the governing body needs to know.
Ma'am, I think there are specifications in the procurement code that outline what comes to council and what does not. And not every contractor obligation comes to council, but the sizable ones certainly, you need to be involved.
Yeah. And the situation that we're in now, that we all agree that we're in, I think we definitely need to know, especially if they're going to be expenses like this.
Yeah.
Counsel, do we want to set a time with the term of engagement?
No, not right now.
Same age?
I think we need to just go ahead and as we, as they sift through what needs to be done, then we can come back to the drawing board.
Yeah, just have them on as needed.
Yes, ma'am.
Keep them as needed, PR.
I know that limit to the same amount of hours.
15 hours, yeah.
Same amount. As long as, you know, same amount. If he goes, you just let us know, Ms. Thompson, she need.
Right.
I'll do that.
As long as everybody in the loop on that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
That's the key to that.
Yeah, that's the key to everything now, keeping everybody in the loop of what's going on.
Right.
Yeah.
Also with. To the point, in this engagement letter as well, some services here that goes down to payroll processing, reporting services. I don't think that is needed in this case. I think he was originally brought on to do budgetary, help with those supporting the finance department with that, but not for payroll services. So I think we need to take that out of the agreement.
I had him include that because I have some concerns about payroll. We have one person doing payroll. We need assistance, and it's using that old software system, Nicholson and all that.
You need a backup in event something happens.
And I agree with Mr. Thompson on that. If he called, if he's calling him here to help with the finance side of that payroll system included there too.
I think, yeah, I think that everything that we need him for, could possibly need him for, needs to be in the contract so that nothing will like, you know, be said to where, oh, no, well, you didn't tell me this initially. I think everyone needs to be in the loop. Everything needs to be in the contract for that just-in-case moment. If we don't need him for it, then we won't use him for it. But if we need him for it, then it's already bonded in the contract.
Yeah.
Well, like it says, you know, in all other matters related thereto, that will encompass whatever needs we have. Those needs will be met. That statement will protect us and cover us for that.
So he could be flexible if they need him, this place, this place. But this diminishing the work that we could be getting out of him, you know, to see us through or help, you know.
Well, the reason why I stated that is because we already have someone that's been doing HR and doing payroll in HR, and that's Ms. Brittany Webb. And I went out, talked to Mr., had a conversation with Mr. Kirkley this afternoon. I mean, he basically said, no, you, I don't, I don't even, he didn't even understand why that was there. He didn't see where he needed to help with payroll because we have someone already working for payroll, doing payroll.
If he's the system, the system that we are trying to go to, if you're familiar with that system, and we got him here and we might as well leave him here while he could guide Ms. Webb in any avenues that she need, if she need help. So I think the best thing to do is just leave it, leave it as is.
Yeah, because he knows how to question.
But he said, he said that he didn't know why he was on there, but is he okay with staying on there, doing that?
He didn't see why, he didn't see that it was necessary for him to be, to have services.
Did he sign a contract stating that he was okay with doing it?
There's no contract.
It's in this contract. It's in this contract.
Okay.
And again, he put it in because I asked him to. I don't know what the future brings. I don't tell any employee that they have a guaranteed job tomorrow or next year. And I needed assistance, need to know that the payroll system is going to go forward no matter what. I've talked to Ms. Webb, and I told her I wasn't dissatisfied with her performance, but I did feel like this was necessary. So I asked him to put it into the contract.
Yes, and I don't think it's necessary for us to continue challenging everything because as it says, in all of the matters related thereto.
That's why I'm speaking. I mean. That's why I'm speaking on it now, while we're here together now. But also it states that with these services, if I'm not, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that an additional 65, 165 per hour to doing those services?
Yes.
It would not come under the 15-hour limit that we've got for the other work that he's doing.
So it will be separately?
Right.
So it will be another bill on top of also?
Well, if he's here and he incurs three hours' worth of work and some of it's on the payroll system and some of it's on the budget, he's still just got three hours' work. It's still the same.
But also, also take in concern and consideration, excuse me, that dealing with payroll, including our information, I don't know how well that some of the staff members or yourself, when you dealing with payroll, there's all type of confidential information. And, you know, we have to make sure that our staff is comfortable with someone else coming in, looking at their confidential information and not saying, saying things like their addresses and such like that, that type of information. And Ms. Brittany.
Well, he should be held at a certain type of bonding.
For confidentiality, correct.
Yeah, so he should be held.
But I'm just saying that us, when we making decisions like this, we're just keeping, we keep it in consideration.
So what happens if going forward?
Staff would not concern themselves with someone being in there lacking confidentiality. Staff, I mean, that's normally something the staff wouldn't consider.
Yeah, because I mean, you can also, you can get, so when this other lady was here, did we take that into consideration as well?
I couldn't tell you in the beginning.
For three years?
No, I couldn't tell you in the beginning because I didn't do our contract in the beginning. And the last contract was signed by Mr. Thompson.
But then that's something, yeah, well, and then like going forward, it could have been something too.
So, but if you were, you were in the seat.
I didn't sign a contract though.
But you were in the seat.
But if you wanted her to stay, then that could have been, I mean, well, we have been doing the same thing with her as well.
If she was still here, yes, because that needed to come to the governing body. But of course, it didn't come to the governing body at that time.
It would just be here all night.
But.
But I'm just giving you, I'm giving you some things to think about, everyone. You don't have to vote the way I vote or any, I'm trying to talk, discuss with the, with council because we can't meet all together at any given time. So that's why I'm having that discussion now.
I understand your discuss, your discussion, but I, right now, at this point in time, I think that if he is already under any type of contract with us and the fact that if whatever firm he's under, I'm sure that they have clauses in his contract with the firm to not have him talk about anyone's, like, well, to know that anyone's, any responsibility.
Confidentiality.
Yeah, any responsibility that he's working with.
There's a confidentiality clause right here.
Well, if there's already, then we're already talking about it. If it's already in the thing.
I'm just saying.
That is something theoretically he would learn when he was going through school, working at the firm, and he knows, I'm sure he knows already.
That's fine. I stated it, I stated it, and it's fine.
On our jobs, we know that there is confidentiality that we must maintain. So I don't think it's necessary to sit here and to continually go back and forth about confidentiality.
We don't have to go back and forth. I just needed to state it because at the end of the day.
Employees are not concerned about that. These employees weren't.
I think they, yes, they came, they came to concern about that.
Administrator stuff, they're not concerned about. So I don't think we need to make an issue.
Because any decisions, any decisions we make affect them. So they are concerned.
If I could add there, if I could add, just something to put your mind at ease, I like to use licensed professionals because they have something at risk. They have a license at risk. And if they violated these issues, we would go after the license. I've worked with auditors and accountants in the past, and that's exactly the issue. You want to have a license that's at risk, and he does.
That settles that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you actually setting up that time for me to talk with him. I had the opportunity to talk with him with both of you and then one-on-one. And we had a good conversation. And I let him know it was nothing towards him as a person because, of course, I'm just meeting him. But, you know, of course, there's a process with everything.
Thank you.
So. Any other questions, council? I know you just walked in, your co-signator. You okay? Okay. All right. And if there are no other questions, all in favor, show of hands. Any opposed? Thank you. Next, we are going to executive session. Executive session pursuant to the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, Sections 30-4, 70A1-2, for the discussion of personnel, personnel evaluations, employment compensation or appointments, and the receipt of legal advice. I need a motion to go into executive session, please. May it have been properly moved to second. Any questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Yes.
Be a nice one.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone, again. I need a motion to exit out of executive session.
So move.
As we're properly moving to second. Any questions, counsel? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Any opposed? Any opposed? Thank you. There were no action taken in executive session. All I need now is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
As we're properly moved in second. All in favor? Thank you.